Good evening, everyone. Call the City Council Order at 8:00 on Monday night, June 8th, 2020. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, as in past similar weeks, a few opening remarks before we get started. This evening's meeting will be conducted, again, a little differently than our usual council meetings. When we're in the chamber, we'll be implementing the Governor's Order regarding relief for the open meeting law. This allows the councilors to participate remotely. All councilors are present and will conduct a roll call shortly to confirm their attendance. Council have been asked to review agenda items before the meeting and contact the mayor or department heads to obtain answers to their questions prior to the meeting so this meeting can be conducted efficiently. All votes will be via roll call. The mayor is available, should he be needed, to address the council questions. The council will be conducting a public hearing tonight with public participating remotely. We will try to make this as seamless as possible and ask for your cooperation and patience as we all work through this together. I will discuss this further before the start of the public hearing. I ask the members of the public that are participating to keep their computers and phones on mute until the public participation portion of the agenda is up. There are 22 items on this evening's agenda. I will now ask the clerk to call the roll to confirm attendance.
Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner is present.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset is present.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas is present.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera is present.
Counselor Irish.
Counselor Irish is present.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin is present.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis is present.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem is present.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing is present.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman is present.
And Counselor Roby.
Excuse me, Counselor Roby is present.
Eleven present, sir.
Okay, so we have all councilors in attendance this evening. Again, we have 22 items on the agenda. I will now ask the clerk to read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes of the City Council Meeting, May 18th, 2020.
Mr. President.
Counselor Tenera.
Please accept and place on file.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept and place on file our minutes from the last meeting. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to accept and place on file the meeting minutes.
Counselor Tenera.
Yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Aussing.
Counselor Aussing votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
And Counselor Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Eleven yes, sir.
The motion to accept and place on file the meeting minutes is approved. Eleven in favor and none opposed. Agenda item number two.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for special permit from Attorney Brian Falk on behalf of WP Marlboro Mass Owner LLC to build a multifamily residential project in the business district to be known as Volaris Marlboro, consisting of 188 units in four buildings at 339 Boston Post Road East, Order Number 20-107995A.
Mr. President, this is Counsel Roby.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to continue this public hearing to July 20th at 8:00.
Motion has been made and seconded to continue the public hearing to July 20th at 8:00. During discussion on the motion.
This is Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman.
I just wanted for the folks at home if we could just give the reasoning of why we're extending the date of the public hearing. I think folks at home have been interested in the project and would like to know the extension reasoning.
Mr. President, if I may, can I respond?
Absolutely. Counselor Roby.
Thank you. So for the public's interest, the City Council special permit is one piece of what this developer needs to go through. They also need a special permit from the ZBA. They need to go through site plan. They'll need to get a road opening from Mass DEP. And they need to go through the Conservation Commission. The ZBA has continued their public hearing. The Conservation Commission has continued their public hearing, and Site Plan will be having a public hearing. So rather than the City Council holding a public hearing and then having a potential revised plan because of action taken by any other committee or organization, we felt it was more prudent to wait until everybody else has done their work and we have a more final product to have for the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Roby.
Is that sufficient, Counsel Pearlman?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President.
Counselor Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. One other question as well. Choose me if you hear the background noise, I'm competing with a Holly Davidson across the street from me. But as I speak, I just wanted to ask, if we find ourselves meeting remotely on July 20th, will we hold the hearing in the format of teams or will we decide on a different format or wait or postpone it till we can meet at the chambers?
I would say the good news, Counselor Orem, is we have five, six weeks to figure that out. I would like to see that the City Hall is open, but I don't, we won't know that just yet. But if we have to conduct it remotely, they've been run very successfully through the teams' process at Conservation, and I would assume the city would follow, or the council would follow the same logic.
Thank you for the answer. I just want to prepare the general public if they need to know, hopefully they'll know that it's one way or the other that they can participate. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Any other discussion on the motion to continue the public hearing until July 20th at 8:00 p.m.? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Aussing.
Counsel Aussing votes yes.
Eleven yes, sir.
The motion to continue the public hearing to July 20th at 8:00 p.m. is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number three.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650 to add a new Section 38 relative to creating a large-scale, ground-mounted, solar photovoltaic overlay district, Order Number 20-107975.
A few comments before we start. The public hearing councilors and the members of the public, as I mentioned earlier, the council will try to make this public hearing as seamless as possible, and we ask for your cooperation and patience as we all learn this process together. So some key reminders as we go through this. I can scroll up. So please keep your computer and phone muted when not speaking, unmute to speak, and mute when finished speaking. Just like if the public was in the chambers, please be respectful while waiting for the public hearings to start and as the council needs to conduct its business. The system does not work when everyone tries to speak at once. We will do our best to get each individual the opportunity to speak, so please be patient. Do not watch the meeting on TV. There is a delay. Your remote access capability is real time. And a few more. Should there be any technical issues, we'll recess and try and figure it out. Our ID department will monitor the system for issues and will remove individuals who are disrupting the meeting. At the conclusion of the public meeting, the council will recess and the system will be cleared of participants, and then the council will continue with the remainder of their agenda. So just as a reminder, the public hearings are conducted in four stages: public speaking in favor, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and questions from the city councilors. At this time, I would ask Counselor Roby to take over the president's position and run the public hearing.
Thank you. This is Counsel Roby ready to take over. Four stages have already been read, so I will start with, is there anyone from the public speaking in favor?
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Michael Aussing, 43 Varley Road. I'm presenting today an overlay district versus solar photovoltaic overlay on the Hudson Street landfill. So a quick overview, so the plan is to add Section 65038, which describes the overlay district. It basically takes the landfill and allows the city, at their discretion, to put a solar facility on the landfill. The overlay district describes the construction, operation, maintenance, and removal of the solar facility. The location is the Hudson Street landfill, and I'll show you a picture of that in a moment. It's two parcels, Parcel 30-4, which is 24 acres, and 30-4 Charlie, which is 11 acres. And the genesis of this was councilors, you know, just listening to the councilors, on numerous occasions, there was a desire to use the landfill for a solar facility. So this is the picto, highlighted in green is the area where the solar facility could be situated. The overlay district includes the entire, both those parcels, and the council and the city at their wish can do some of it, all of it, or none of it. But it allows us that opportunity to place a solar facility on a landfill. So a little history, so I want to recognize Counsel Dusset. Back in 2018, Counsel Dusset and Assistant Solicitor Pentagon Griffin, they worked with the mayor and basically drafted the order. So I stole it, enhanced it, so there's a credit Counsel Dusset and Assistant Solicitor for their work. And what they did was they set it up to go off of Broadmeadow Street in 2018. It was a combination city-state and private venture. The City Council held a public hearing in September of 2018. The Planning Board gave a favorable recommendation in October 2018, and unfortunately, Urban Affairs did not take any action on the zoning request, so it sort of just died in committee. But all this does is I took what Counsel Dusset had done and modified it. So ask yourself why the landfill. So the key thing here is the state actually encourages solar development on landfills. The state, through what's called the Solar Massachusetts Renewable Target, otherwise known as the SMART program, provides incentives for municipalities and developers to install solar facilities on landfills. And the financial incentives are on a sliding scale. What does that mean? The sooner you get in, the more benefits you get. The later you get in, the benefits are reduced. This particular site on the landfill could house up to a site about a 6-megawatt solar facility, and that's a pretty good-sized solar facility. The city has potential to receive a one-time payment from the developer of $10 million. So that would be $10 million right to the city coffers, unsolicited, but we would follow the procurement process. We'd go out to bid and, you know, do our best to get more than $10 million if that's possible. Some good news, National Grid has indicated this is a great site for solar because in citing any solar facility, you want to make sure the electrical capabilities that supports the grid are there. And since Boston Scientific is there, my discussions with National Grid have indicated there is sufficient three-phase power with Boston Scientific there, so it makes for an excellent, or a very easy location for National Grid to work with the vendor to hook it up. The vendor does all the work. There's no work on the city's part. And we put the procurement document out there, but the vendor does all the work. One of the benefits, potential for Marlboro low-income resident users, electric users that are considered R2, they get to receive an extra $0.02 off their electric rate. So as you're aware, our current rate is .09696. That becomes for our R2 users .07696, and that carries through for the life of the project. The city can specify how much of the landfill is used for a solar project. If you recall, this discussion, do we want to put a recreation facility? Does a DPW want to keep part of it for their activities? We can pick. Take that 35 acres, carve out whatever the city decides they want, make it big or small. Of course, if it's not a 6-megawatt facility and it's smaller, the financial return to the city is a little bit different. And in my discussion with Ann Lowry of Mass DEP, the state has already permitted 100 landfills in the Commonwealth, representing 200 megawatts of renewable electricity, 175 which is completed. So they're working on a bunch right now. So to conclude, you know, we're not doing anything with the landfill. Here's an opportunity to use the landfill. We can obtain some needed revenue in these challenging times, which would also help benefit residents and the taxpayers. Provides low-income residents, electric users, a discount on their electricity, and we support the Commonwealth's effort, and it's not just the Commonwealth's, but ours, led by Counsel Dusset, to reduce our carbon footprint. So with that, Madam Chair, that concludes my presentation. I would ask the city clerk to read, we did receive a correspondence from an individual today, if he could read the individual's name and address for the record.
Correspondence was received in favor from Alexander Williamson of 63 Commonwealth Avenue.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Aussing. Is there anyone else from the public speaking in favor? Is there anyone else from the public speaking in favor? Is there anyone else from the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Is there anyone from the public with questions? Is there anyone from the public with questions? Is there anyone from the public with questions? Hearing none, that portion of the hearing is closed. Is there any public speaking in opposition? Is there any public speaking in opposition? Is there any public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, that portion of the hearing is closed. Are there questions from the City Council?
Madam President.
Counsel Orem.
Thank you, and thanks to everyone that's been working on renewable energies. As Mr. Williamson noted in his email, and it should be noted, that the work to clean up and resurface the landfill is obviously the first part, the environmental cleanup. And then, once the landfill is certified for use, then this next step would be appropriate. And I'm grateful that we're heading in that direction. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. This is the opportunity for councilors to ask questions. Is there any councilors with questions?
Madam President, it's Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much. I just want to first thank Mr. Aussing for including the work that I completed with Solicitor Pentagon Griffin on the prior attempt at this. I understand that the only change was actually the location. I talked to the current city solicitor about that. Also, the prior location was actually on Palmerner Street, not Broadmeadow. It's the same, two ways to get to the same open space, so. But I think this is a wonderful step for the city, and it provides a great opportunity for providing green energy for the city as well as savings for a low-income population. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors?
Counsel Roby, Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers.
I have a comment and a question. I know my neighborhood, 146 houses are our electric heat. I know they would appreciate that $0.02 savings per kilowatt. The other, the question I really have, though, Counsel Roby, a few months ago, we talked about putting a couple ballfields there. Now, I believe that's still in our plan, and I believe those ballfields were going to encompass, I think, six acres. And I also think we were going to float a barn on that. Now, that $10 million that we would get for that part of the deal with the contractor, would any of that go towards the ballfields? Are we at that stage yet?
I think I'm going to let Counsel Aussing answer those questions. He probably has more understanding.
So, thank you, Madam President. Counsel Landers, as you're aware, the meals tax that funds the fields, we have over $4 million on that right now, so that would be, that could be used for it. If you recall, the council approved two months ago, three months ago, $3 million to cap off that portion of the landfill in order to make it usable for a recreational facility. We would be working with the city engineer and DEP to see just what we have to do to the requirements to put the solar facility in, would still have to meet DEP approval, so we'd have to work through the city engineer and DEP for that. But to answer your question, could the $10 million can be used for anything we want it to be used for? You know, and again, it's $10 million if you have a 35-acre solar farm. If you have a 30, do the math, 29-acre solar farm, it'll be something less than that. So I don't know if that answers your question, Counsel Landers?
Oh, very well. That's great, and I think it's a tremendous project. Thank you.
Are there other councilors with questions?
Madam President, Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin.
Thank you, Madam President, and I echo everybody else's sentiments. This is great. I like to see this moving forward to, you know, kind of consider different ways we can expand renewable energy in the city, so I think that's wonderful. My only question is that a couple of months ago, when we approved the funding to fix the issues with the landfill, some questions were raised about whether or not this would be good for solar development. There seemed to be some questions at the time of whether or not the site would actually be good from an engineering standpoint. Have we received updated information on that, or is that something that we'll be looking at going forward as part of this process?
Counsel Aussing.
Thank you, Madam President. So Counsel Navin, yes, we will be, I have had discussions with the city engineer. He does have some reservations. He has had some initial conversations with DEP. They were actually encouraged. As you're well aware, the state is pushing heavily to develop landfills to get solar because they've got a pretty aggressive 2050 goal to get as much carbon-free energy onto the grid as possible. But I am pretty confident DEP will not let us do that if they're not happy. So DEP will make sure, working through the city engineer, that if we're going to put a solar facility on here, the landfill is capped to the requirements that other landfill caps out. So the short answer to the question is, yes, we need to have DEP bless off putting a solar facility on our landfill.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other councilors with questions? Any other councilors with questions? Other councilors with questions? Hearing none, that portion of the hearing is closed. The public hearing is now completely closed. This is in Urban Affairs, and the Planning Board also has a public hearing on 622 on this item. I would turn this back over to Counsel Aussing, President, or do you want me to do?
No, we don't need a roll call vote for that because it's just closing the public hearing, so no. So it's already in Urban Affairs, so thank you. Madam President, outstanding job. I will take over the reins. So the public hearing is closed. It is in Urban Affairs. We will take a two-minute break to have, to make sure that the, we're all set?
I'm not sure.
Well, we'll take a two-minute break just to make sure that we're all set. So two-minute recess. The City Council is now back in session. We will now proceed with Agenda Item Number Four.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $485,113, which moves funds from Economic Development to MEDC to fund the fiscal year 21 operations of Marlboro Economic Development Corporation.
Mr. President.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to go forward this evening and approve this transfer. The amazing work that Director Harris and her team has done the last few years in the city. Just as a couple examples, very instrumental in the Lincoln Street rezoning for the business, neighborhood business zone, as well as doing all the heavy lifting for the mass grant to help revitalize Lincoln Street. My motion would be to approve the transfer this evening.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the transfer. And again, I remind the council, this is a 30% reduction in the MEDC funding, and I will just point out that the director of MEDC is with the planning, with the licensing board right now. MEDC has done an outstanding job pulling all the restaurant applications together, and they're going through them right now so they can be ready to proceed with outdoor dining. So motion's been made and seconded to approve the transfer to fund MEDC for fiscal year 21. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President.
Counselor Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. So with the 30% reduction, as you said, I know Meredith can't be with us right now, but the question is, what are we seeing reduced for that 30% reduction?
Yep, so I can answer that, and if I get in trouble, I'm sure the mayor will chime in. As you recall, the ZAGSTRA program was, I guess, went out of business, so that was 60 grand. We, the fourth employee for MEDC, again, around, I don't know, 60, 70,000, that's not, that's not being funded. We took out some of the money for some of the city programs because with the pandemic right now, MEDC hasn't been able to use all the money that we gave them last year, so they're just going to carry that over this year. So it provided a unique opportunity for the city to save money from our hotel revenue and not use as much to fund MEDC for fiscal year 21. Does that address the comments, Counsel?
Mr. President, yeah. Basically, it was in the mayor's letter, but I think for the general public to know what's happening, the city councilors do from the correspondence. Sometimes we can't read the, I know for time reasons we're not reading everything, and I think what's important to note, though, is indeed with the hotel tax, with the pandemic, as noted in the mayor's letter, it is indeed affecting the funding. So we will need to keep a close eye on that fund, and as you know, I've always been concerned that it's a fund that really creates money at times, but now in this case, it's not, and hopefully it will rebound. And each year, I will continue to question if we need to use the amount of money that is being proposed, but at the same time, in no way does it underestimate the need for economic development. I obviously, as some of the councilors know, have difference of opinion on how we go forward with economic development in its format, but in no way does it underestimate Meredith Harris's work and her associates. With that said, I am in favor of the reduction in the funding at this point, but again, each year, I will reconsider my vote based on actions of MEDC as well as the report card, which is very good this year, and most importantly, too, is working with the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Orem. Are there any other councilors?
Mr. President.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you. I talked to Counsel Irish earlier today, told him, so there was no surprises that I don't feel comfortable voting on this tonight. The only reason is because I have quite a few questions on what these special programs are. I know that I can reach out to the mayor and Meredith. They're all very willing to discuss things, but I think that they should come on record to discuss what these special programs or projects are. I'm not going to make a mountain out of a molehill. If the other councilors feel that they wanted to vote on this, that's great. I appreciate the reduction. I think they could probably do a little bit more, given the circumstances, and with some explanation of what these special projects are. We did lay off 21 part-time employees, so that kind of weighs heavily, so I'm not here to scrutinize every line item, but I just want to make sure that we're putting the money in the right place for fiscal year 2021 and make sure that we know where the money is going. Having said that, again, if all the other councilors don't have any questions, I'm not worried about it. I know I can reach out to the mayor, Meredith, tomorrow or during. I know I can reach out to the mayor, Meredith, tomorrow or during the week, but I don't feel comfortable voting on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dumas. Are there any other questions?
Mr. President, Counselor Landers?
Counselor Landers?
I'm glad I'm not a city administrator right now, whether it's the mayor or it's the director of MEDC. Quite honestly, we need MEDC more than ever. These are tough times. So, to ask an agency, a person, to cut 30% and then move forward, that's quite a feat. I would not want to be in her position. It's obvious right now, she's meeting with the license board right now. I know she's worked the last several days, I talked to her last week, with the restaurants, you know, planning their, how they're going to handle the outdoors. Those are the types of things that MEDC, you know, does. We don't really have another agency in the city, and the mayor's office certainly, they have a lot to do themselves. So, we'd be absolutely lost if we didn't have MEDC to start moving again. And quite honestly, I assume these cuts, they have a board of executive board, and I imagine they had a meeting last week, and she didn't tell me that, but I assume they did, and they talked about the cuts. And some of these cuts are painful. And I think as we've had all the confidence in them right along and good times, likewise, I have all the confidence in the world that they've made some tough cuts. And I think if anything, if anybody can turn, help turn the city around, it's MEDC. So, I just feel that a 30% cut is tough, but I'm going to give them a vote tonight, and I'm going to give them all the support they need. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Landers. Are there any other counselors with questions or comments?
President Ossing, it's Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I did get a chance to talk to Meredith Harris this afternoon about a couple of concerns I had with this. She addressed my concerns, I thought, very comfortably. The ZAGSTER program was a big expense for them. That's now gone, which is beneficial overall to addressing the shortfall budget that she has to confront. I am concerned as far as moving forward, how the hotel residency is going to change, how much occupancy we're going to be having in fiscal year 2021. So, I'm more concerned about going forward. But I think overall, this organization has done outstanding job. Meredith has really taken the initiative to address the needs of the local businesses, especially, you know, eating establishments during this pandemic. And I think we are, you know, fortunate to have her working for the city as well as having MEDC in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dusset. Are there any other counselors with questions?
Mr. President, if I could just interject one second. Counselor Dumas would like to speak.
Absolutely. Counselor Dumas?
Thank you. Again, sorry to take up more time on this, but so, one of the questions I did want to ask was about the ZAGSTER program. It's in their expense column for special projects for FY '21. It says that they were taking it out, but it's actually on this line item. So, that's the confusion that I'm having. If they're going to cancel it, then cancel the program, or is it in for fiscal year 2021? If it is for 2021, then that's why it equals 89,500. If it's not in the program, then we'll subtract that 50,000 from the 89. So, that's the confusion that I'm having. So, if you want to have the program, that's great, but it's in their amount for fiscal year '21. So...
If I could, I'm sorry, Counselor Dumas.
No, if that's the case, so we'll just take 89,000, just subtract it by 50. I know that, Mr. President, it's a question that you, or an answer that you don't have, but that's some of the concerns. Is that transportation for ZAGSTER or for something else?
The ZAGSTER money that was in the budget was, the budget that you see was approved by the executive board and sent to the mayor. The mayor then, subsequent to that, the ZAGSTER program came out. He took out the existing 60 or 50,000, which dropped it down to 485,000. So, that's why you see it in there, Counselor Dumas. But it's in their budget, but it's not approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the counselors?
Mr. President, if no other counselor, Counselor Orem?
Counselor Orem?
Just on page three, top paragraph, just notice, notes from the mayor's letter that our city planning services and urban village development will be handled through leftover FY '20 funding. So, I presume then that even though we don't have a city planner, there will be the opportunity for planning oversight, which is different from economic development oversight. I presume that's what he was trying to state there. Maybe you might know the answer?
Yep. So, the MEDC has, uses some of that money to partner with MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. So, we use them to help us with zoning changes, like the new business district on French Hill, the wayside overlay or district change on Route 20. We use that planning service to give us some insights, to take advantage of some of the knowledge that they have that isn't unique to MEDC, that helps the council shape some of our zoning changes as we move forward. Does that help, Counselor Orem?
Yes. As I said, you know how I feel about having a city planner, but as long as we have some services as we get through next year, in the next fiscal year. Again, each year, I reserve my right to continue with the discussion on how I should see this in the city. But only one vote, I understand it, but we have new counselors who may see some of what I'm trying to say, because Marlboro's unique. Marlboro does not have a city planner. If you look at all of the cities and towns in Massachusetts, most do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Orem. Any other counselors?
Mr. President, Counselor Navin?
Counselor Navin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just want to echo and build off of what Counselor Orem just said. It was one of the questions that I had. I reached out to Meredith earlier today because, you know, thanks to the mayor's letter where he kind of outlined how that money was going to be spent and how they were going to fill those funding gaps, I did want to make sure that there was a consistent level of funding. And Meredith did let me know that there was some money left over from programming that wasn't able to be completed due to COVID-19, that they would level fund those planning services in the upcoming budget, which I think is important for folks to hear and important that they continue to do. And then also, just in regards to the business development manager position that is currently unfilled, you know, and that they're going to be continuing to keep an eye on the business climate, the economic development climate, to see if that's something that they can do. Obviously, I would also echo the rest of the counselors' words where, you know, MEDC, we are lucky to have them. They are doing great work, you know, and I hope that they will be able to continue to do that. But those were a couple of the questions that I had when I talked to Meredith earlier today. She was able to answer those. So, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Navin. Are there any other counselors with any comments? Any other counselors? With that, on the motion to approve the $485,113 transfer, I will ask the clerk to call the roll. Counselor Irish?
Counselor Irish votes yes.
Counselor Dumas?
Counselor Dumas votes no.
Counselor Roby?
Counselor Roby votes yes, but I believe the transfer amount is $133, not 113.
Thank you.
I am just checking real quick. Hold that thought.
My apologies, I went by the mayor's letter. It is 1485,133.
That's what the transfer has on it, so...
That's what the transfer has, and if it's incorrect, we'll make Ms. Harris pay the 20-something-dollar difference out of her pocket.
Okay.
Continue with the roll call vote, please. Counselor Roby, you were yes, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Counselor Navin?
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Ossing? Counselor Ossing votes yes. Counselor Orem?
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Wagner?
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Landers?
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman?
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Dusset?
Counselor Dusset votes yes, and it was the mayor's letter that said 113, and it was the letter from Meredith Harris that said 133.
We'll make the mayor pay for it, then. Counselor Tenera?
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Ten yay, one nay, sir. The motion to approve the transfer of $485,133 is approved. Ten in favor, one opposed. Agenda item number five.
Communication from the mayor regarding a proposed order authorizing the mayor to acquire the property located at 25 Witherby Street, identified as map 69 parcel 244, for the library expansion project and a transfer request in the amount of $481,291 from free cash to capital outlay land acquisition to fund the purchase.
Mr. President?
Counselor Irish?
Thank you. Thank you to the mayor and his staff, Beverly Sleeper. This is, again, quite remarkable to get another parcel, another parcel on Witherby Street for the library building project. It's certainly going to help to work to increase in parking. My motion would be to approve the order and the transfer.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the order and the transfer. Is there any discussion on the motion?
President Ossing, it's Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. What I understand is that there's currently residents in the property right now, and they are tenants at will. I just want to allow them, you know, as much time as necessary, because I'm not sure when we plan to tear down the building, but let's not try to rush them out of the building. You know, let's let them, you know, see if they can come up at some point that's mutually, not just give them a month's notice to get rid, you know, get them leave the house, and then just have a vacant building.
And again, I'm pretty sure the DPW, with the arrangement that they have with the seller, is to have some period of time for the residents to relocate. For counselors' information, I don't know if you've seen, but the DPW has made arrangements to take 84 West Main and 28 Witherby Street down. If you have a chance, drive by the library. Those lots are cleared. It looks, you know, it is going to be great. And so, with the addition of 25, if the council approves the purchase tonight, we have the adjacent lot, 29, that's going to give us all the parking we need for the library.
And, Mr. President, if I may?
Counselor Orem?
With the present pandemic and the governor's directives, they cannot be evicted. They can go voluntarily, but they cannot be evicted till that directive from the governor is lifted.
I mean, I'll speak for me, but I don't believe the mayor's out to evict anybody in any property. I mean, that's, I mean, but you are correct, Counselor Orem. That is, that is true for anyone in a housing situation right now. Any other comments?
Mr. President?
I'm sorry.
Mr. President? Mr. President, Counsel Irish?
Counselor Irish?
Thank you. Just a moment as well. I know previously, the mayor, the mayor and his staff would certainly be working with the, with the tenants of that building to work on finding alternative housing if needed, you know, down the line. So, some of those things the mayor has been, been working on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Irish. Any other comments or questions from the counselors?
This is Counselor Pearlman?
Counselor Pearlman?
Do we have any estimated number of spaces that will be able to be built at this location once it's torn down?
Oh, I'm glad you asked me that question, because I pestered poor Mr. Galone all weekend for that. Yes, we'll get between 30 and 35 spaces when that building comes down.
And is that inclusive of the existing parking area, or that's going to be covered anyway?
That's the 25 and 20, that's the across-the-street parking.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Hearing no other questions, on the motion to approve the order to purchase the property at 25 Witherby and approve the transfer, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Counselor Orem?
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Roby?
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counselor Landers?
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Dusset?
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Navin?
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Tenera?
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Dumas?
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Ossing? Counselor Ossing votes yes. And Counselor Pearlman?
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Eleven yay, sir.
The motion to approve the order to purchase the property and the transfer is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number six.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $22,219.15, which moves funds from reserved for salaries to various accounts to fund the recently ratified MMEA collective bargaining agreement.
Mr. President?
Counselor Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is contractual, and this does represent the retroactive pay. My motion is to approve the transfer.
Motion made and seconded to approve the transfer to fund the MMEA contract of $22,219.15. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counselor Pearlman?
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Dusset?
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Dumas?
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Navin?
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Landers?
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Tenera?
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Ossing? Counselor Ossing votes yes. Counselor Roby?
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
And Counselor Orem?
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Eleven yay, sir.
On the motion to approve the transfer to fund the MMEA contract for $22,219.15, it is approved. Eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding a grant acceptance in the amount of $41,966 for the police department from the Department of Justice to fund the purchase of protective equipment.
Mr. President?
Counselor Irish?
Thank you, Ms. President. What I'd like to do is vote on all four grants this evening at once. Agenda items seven, eight, nine, and 10, motion to approve. And thank you to the Marlboro Police Department.
Motion made and seconded to approve agenda items seven, eight, nine, and 10. Seven is the $41,966 grant for protective equipment for the police department. Agenda item eight is $10,500 for traffic enforcement. Agenda nine is $6,000 for pedestrian and bicycle safety. And item 10 is $2,065.80 for child car seat program. So, motions were made and seconded to approve all four grants. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President, if I may?
Counselor Orem?
I was going to comment just on item number 10. I think that is fantastic to see that we'll be donating through this grant 30 car seats to people in need. That is a fantastic grant. Thank you. All the grants are fantastic, but I wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Orem. Are there questions from any of the other counselors? Hearing none on the motion to approve the four grants in agenda items seven, eight, nine, and 10, I will ask the clerk to call the roll. Counselor Tenera?
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Ossing? Counselor Ossing votes yes. Counselor Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman?
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Landers?
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Dumas?
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Counselor Orem?
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Navin?
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Dusset?
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Roby?
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
And Counselor Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Eleven yay, sir.
The motion to approve all four grants is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item number 11.
Communication from the mayor regarding a proposed reorganization of the finance department.
Mr. President.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. A motion to suspend the rules to accept the communication from the solicitor, please.
A motion has been made and seconded to suspend the rules to accept the communication from the solicitor. Any discussion on the suspension? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the suspension.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Austin.
Counselor Austin votes yes.
Counselor Oram.
Counselor Oram votes yes.
Counselor Roby. I'm sorry, Counselor Roby.
She's muted.
You appear to be muted, Counselor Roby.
I got something on my screen. I couldn't find my unmute button. Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Eleven yay, sir.
The motion to suspend the rules to accept the communication from the solicitor is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. Counsel Irish.
Mr. President, thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the advertising of the salary ordinance in the solicitor's communication.
Motion made and seconded to approve the salary ordinance that's in the solicitor's communication. The main, uh, I'm sorry, to advertise. Thank you very much. Again, I'll restate it. Motion to advertise the salary ordinance in the solicitor's communication has been made and seconded. Discussion on the motion.
Mr. President, this is Counsel Roby.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you. Uh, you and I have had several conversations. The mayor and I have had a couple. Unfortunately, I couldn't get a hold of the solicitor, and I do not see him on here. My concern is regarding the solicitor's letter to indicate that his statement of, um, numbers, items one and two that are on the original order are still in proper legal form. And my question to the mayor of, if we only approve a salary ordinance, can he hire a person? He thinks he can. I don't think he can. And if he can't, then is delaying the, um, advertising of one and two going to put this process even longer, assuming everybody agrees with it? So I know there was an issue for me with item four on the original order, the waiving of two steps. Um, I don't understand why we're not just advertising the whole order, and for me minus number four. Um, so I, I wish that the solicitor was on so that I could get confirmation. I'm reading mobile code 125.5, which, and four, which talks about classification of positions. And if it's in the ordinance, it needs to be in the ordinance. And there's currently no finance director position in our ordinance. There's a order to amend that, but that's not being advertised. So that's my dilemma for only advertising part of this tonight. Um, I guess I'm okay with it, but I don't know. It, at some point, the rest of it also has to be advertised. And I guess I want to be clear. Can the mayor hire this person?
Yeah, so, so, so Counsel Roby, if the council goes ahead and approves the advertising of the salary ordinance only, I want to make sure the counselors understand salary ordinance and then the, what I call section 67, which is the ordinance that describes the position. You know, if it gets advertised properly and legal says, hey, you can't do one without the other, then it gets slowed down for two weeks and the mayor will adjust accordingly. I'm getting hang, this will make sure, am I all set in the back there, Madam, uh, Secretary? Correct. So, again, so we, alls we're doing is advertising. We're not approving anything. The rest of it's going to get tabled, the job descriptions, the rest of the ordinance, they're going to get tabled to our next meeting, June 22nd, and I'm sure that'll give us plenty of time to get that answer, um, that whether or not the positions can be filled if the section 67 isn't updated. Does that help?
It does help. I, I know, um, the mayor is on, if anybody else would like to talk to him, but his comment to me was, his intention is not to send down another order. So we're now pulling a piece of the original order out into a separate order, and we're advertising it. So if in fact then we need to advertise the original order, yeah, advertising. So why not just advertise the whole original order? Um, and I would move to amend to delete of that order. Uh, I.
Okay, so, so hold that thought. Let me hear any input from the rest of the counselors.
Mr. President, Counsel Irish.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, uh, and thank you to Counsel Roby. Um, I, I spoke with the mayor as well when I, because I, I was going to, uh, remove Roman numeral four, because I wasn't comfortable with that language as well. Um, but this would be just, uh, advertising, uh, of the salary ordinance only. But I did have, I did have issues as well with, uh, Roman numeral four, uh, on that language. Thank, thank you, Mr. President.
So Counselor Roby, if you want to amend Counselor Irish's motion to advertise a salary ordinance and include items one and two, I don't know if that, the clerk can pull that off in time anyway at this stage of the game.
I will do all I can, but I, I believe I can, but I'm not 1,000%. I'm, uh, a little bit at the mercy of the newspaper, that's all.
So if you, so Counsel Roby, if you want to do that, and then next, in two weeks, we can have that debate on everything being properly advertised, and if everybody's happy with it, if not.
Is it easier for the clerk to amend the original order by just deleting section four out of this, and then advertising it as a whole order, instead of adding it to the other order?
Counsel Roby, I can do whatever the council wishes.
I knew he was going to say that.
You order it advertised, it shall be done. Uh, can it, will it make it, uh, for the 10-day requirement? I believe I will be able to make it for the 10-day requirement before the council's next meeting. Um, but, uh, yeah, again, I'm just at the mercy of the, of the newspaper to get me back a proof and, and that it, it's where we'll be ready to, to get it advertised. But if the council wants it advertised, I will make it happen, and then I will let you know if, uh, I've made the deadline for the newspaper.
To me, whether it makes it or not is, is semi-important. The more important to me is why do a dual process in this? If in fact, the mayor doesn't plan on coming back with something at some point in the future, we're back to figuring out how to advertise the rest of this, when we've got a document in front of us. So if Counsel Irish is okay, I, I don't know if, it maybe if he would take back his original motion and just move to approve the original order?
Less section four.
Minus section four. And, and I would add a request that in, uh, number one, at the very end of the sentence, be added the words delineated by city code. So it reads, "The finance director treasurer shall be the director of all financial management operations and shall perform all duties of the comptroller treasurer, delineated in the city code."
Okay, with the recognition that that now quote, isn't in proper format recognized by the solicitor. So if he has issues with it later in the week, it'll be stricken from the record if that's, if he doesn't deem it appropriate.
Okay.
You're okay with that?
If he doesn't, um, I guess I would argue that the code supersedes the job description, so, um.
I, I will spare you my Pirates of the Caribbean.
Yeah, I, I know. We had lots of discussions. So I, I guess I need to go back to Counsel Irish to make sure that he's okay with, um, giving, taking back his original motion and making a new one to approve the original order.
Counselor Irish, are you okay withdrawing your original motion?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I will rescind my original motion. Um, I just want to obviously make sure that, um, you know, that Counsel Roby said with that language, as well as the Roman numeral four was removed. Um, if that la, language is sufficient, um, with the city solicitor, yes, I will rescind my motion.
Thank you.
And then you would make a new motion to advertise items one, two, and three, correct?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to advertise item one, two, and three.
In addition to the salary.
In addition to the table.
To the salary ordinance.
Hang on, just let me catch up on the paper portion of the program.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So on the motion to advertise items one, two, three, and the table, and add at the end of item one delineated, delineated.
Delineated.
Yeah, that word too. What, oh, is Mr. Grossfield on?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. City Solicitor.
And how's your night going?
It's going well, and I am okay with the words being added at the end of Roman numeral one. And I think otherwise you're, you have it in proper legal form for advertising.
Perfect. So are all the counselors, the motion's been made and seconded to advertise the, uh, Roman numerals one, two, three, and the table, and add at the end of Roman numeral one delineate, delineate that word by the code. Everybody clear?
I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landis votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Austin.
Counsel Austin votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Oram.
Counselor Oram votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Eleven yay, sir.
The motion to advertise items one, Roman numeral one, two, three, and the table, along with adding the words delineated, closer?
Got it.
By code to item one is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. We're not done yet. Counsel Irish, do you want to postpone those two items to our next agenda so we can vote on the job descriptions? And if the clerk can work his magic to get them advertised properly, we'll postpone it to June 22nd. No, not the advert. We still have to vote on the job descriptions.
Correct, but those don't have to be advertised?
No, job descriptions don't, nope. Go ahead, hang on. So Counselor Irish.
Yeah, um, yeah, motion to postpone the discussion on the job descriptions and ordinance change, uh, to June 22nd.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion on the motion. So basically, counselors, if it's advertised properly, in two weeks, we'll be able to vote on the ordinance changes and the job descriptions.
Yes, sir.
And I encourage, if you have comments or questions, call the mayor. On the motion, it's been made and seconded to postpone to the June 22nd meeting. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Austin.
Counselor Austin votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counselor Oram votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Eleven yay, sir.
Motion to postpone to the June 22nd meeting so we can review the job descriptions and hopefully the advertised ordinance is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. That was easy. Agenda item number 12.
Communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of Laurent Lemieux as plumbing inspector for a three-year term from the date of confirmation, along with a proposed order to allow Mr. Lemieux to start at step three of the salary schedule.
Mr. President, Counsel Dumas would like to speak.
Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I spoke with, uh, the finance chair, Counsel Irish, and we are both in agreement to approve this tonight. We should be having a joint session, um, but we see there's no need to do that and just approve it this evening and welcome the new plumbing inspector.
Motion made and seconded to approve the plumbing inspector at his new salary. And just for the counselor's information, if you saw the city auditor's letter, there are funds, or will be funds in there when the, uh, contract rolls into fiscal year 21 for that position. So motion made and seconded to approve our new plumbing inspector at the salary indicated on the mayor's sheet. Discussion from the counselors. Any discussion from the counselors? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counsel Oram votes yes.
Counsel Austin.
Counsel Austin votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Eleven yay, sir.
The motion to approve our new plumbing inspector is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. It is approved. Agenda item 13.
Communication from the mayor regarding the upgrade of the board of health license board clerk from senior clerk to principal clerk effective May 25th, 2020.
Mr. President, Counsel Dumas would like to speak.
Counsel Dumas.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file, and I will update the counselors. What's needed to finish this is a transfer for fiscal year 20 to fund the position, which I would anticipate at our next meeting. So there's nothing, the mayor's notifying us that this position, uh, or this increase has happened, and now it's just a, he's got to put the rest of the paperwork in. So motion to accept and place on file. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landis votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Austin.
Counsel Austin votes yes.
Counsel Oram.
Counselor Oram votes yes. Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Eleven yays, sir. The motion to accept and place on file, the communication from the mayor is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 14. Communication from the mayor regarding a proposed amendment to tax increase, excuse me, tax increment financing agreement between GE Healthcare Bioservices Corp. and Atlantic Marlboro Realty LLC and the city of Marlboro.
Mr. President.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is recognizing as a successor in interest, name, a name change only, the agreement is still, will remain binding, my motion is to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the name change for the TIF. I will mention to the councillors, I did ask MEDC, they prepare yearly TIF compliance, and GE is in compliance with their hiring and paperwork for the TIF. I will make sure all that information gets down to the council through the mayor. Discussion on the motion to approve the name change for the TIF. Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counselor Wagner.
Counselor Wagner votes yes.
Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counselor Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counselor Roby.
Counselor Roby votes yes.
Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counselor Ossing.
Counselor Ossing votes yes.
Counselor Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counselor Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counselor Dumas.
Counselor Dumas votes yes.
Eleven yays, sir. The motion to approve the name change is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 15. Communication from the mayor regarding Standard and Poor's global bond rating of AAA for the city of Marlboro.
Mr. President.
Counselor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the mayor and his staff and the city council, just like the mayor said, this is certainly a team victory, and this is absolutely wonderful news to be going forward, possibly, you know, post COVID-19, to be able to utilize and receive lower, lower interest rates. Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file, is there any discussion on the motion?
President Ossing, it's Counselor Dusset.
Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Again, I have to agree, to maintain a AAA bond rating in the circumstances and situations that our global society is confronting, really shines well for what we've done within the city and the people involved with this. This is something that we should all be proud of, and everyone in the city should, will really benefit from this type of rating. Thank you.
Counselor Dusset, you are 100% correct on that, I mean, from department heads to our workers, to the taxpayers, the time we pay their taxes and bills, it's a great victory all around, and will help the city going forward for future capital purchases, so it is good news, and there's a lot of congratulations, and I would extend my congratulations to the councillors for their efforts in all their finance activities that we have done. Any other discussion on the motion?
This is Counselor Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just want to applaud everyone for their hard work on this, the mayor, the council, and everyone in the city departments. I did have a question regarding the overview, where even though they predicted that the city will maintain stable finances, they still imagine that the unprecedented widespread effects of COVID could affect both the Commonwealth's revenue and our local economies, including Marlboro, which in the future could weaken our budgetary performance, and so I was just curious what steps we're taking to ensure that the, you know, impact of COVID-19, which we still don't really know the full impact of what it will be, how that might, might affect the budgetary performance and our rating moving forward.
Yep, so you're aware of some of the moves we've made, the mayor has frozen expenditures, we've reduced some staffing levels and some part-time positions, they continue to go through the budget, the mayor's asked for all department heads to give 3% and 6% reductions in the fiscal year 21 budget, and I believe the mayor's coming down on our June 22nd meeting to update the council on fiscal year 20 budget performance and fiscal year 21 expectations. Does that address what you need for now, Counselor Pearlman?
Yes, I appreciate that context, especially for the public watching at home, and just for my own context as well, how often do we receive an update on the bond rating? Is it an annual thing, or is it every couple years?
Annual, we get, we go S and P, we go out, especially this year, we went out for a $31 million bond package, and they reviewed us, and we'll get it, well, hopefully if we do well, we'll continue to get a good bond rating, but again, that all, you know, having good stabilization accounts, good rainy day funds, a tight budget, a low tax rate, a good business sector, all this stuff that we do, all comes together, and it's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts, I'd love to find just one thing and say, you gotta do this, but it's not, there's a lot of stuff, and, you know, it took me 20 years on this council before we got, well, 18, 19 from last year, it's a lot of hard work, so, you know, and it's kudos to a lot of people.
Well, thank you so much, and again, I really applaud everyone's efforts on this, it's very exciting for the city of Marlboro, and definitely puts us in a really great position moving forward, so thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor Pearlman, are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to accept and place on file the mayor's communication. Counselor Ossing.
Counselor Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counselor Landers votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counselor Orem votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Eleven yays, sir. The motion to accept and place on file, the mayor's communication is approved, or accept and place on file, eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 16. Communication from the planning board regarding a favorable recommendation and comments on the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650, Sections 5, 17, and 18, relative to contracted yards and landscape contracted yards, and the proposed rezoning of land located on Farm Road identified as map 85, parcel 12, order number 20-100-7947E.
Mr. President, this is Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, I move to accept and place on file the recommendation of the planning board.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept and place on file the recommendation of the planning board, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counselor Tenera.
Counselor Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Navin.
Counselor Navin votes yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Counsel Ossing votes yes.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counselor Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Eleven yays, sir. Motion has, to refer the plan, or to accept and place on file, the communication from the planning board is approved, eleven in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 17. Communication from Counselor Roby regarding proposed zoning amendments to Chapter 650, Sections 5, 17, and 18, relative to contracted yards and landscape contracted yards, and the proposed rezoning of land located on Farm Road identified as map 85, parcel 12, order number 20-100-7947E.
Mr. President, this is Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President and councillors, as I indicated in my letter, this was referred to Urban Affairs with an expectation that there would need to be some discussion. The planning board had their public hearing, no one spoke, they gave a favorable recommendation, we had no one speak at our public hearing, we really can't make changes to the mayor's proposal, so what I would like to do this evening is to move to remove from committee the order, and then if that is done, to move to approve the rezoning. So, step one would be move to remove this item from the Urban Affairs Committee.
Motion made and seconded to remove the contracted yard ordinance from Urban Affairs, is there any discussion on the motion?
Counsel Dumas would like to speak.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just think that this should stay in Urban Affairs, so our, Urban Affairs should meet, just to hammer out any last questions that we have. I feel that most contractors or storage yard owners did not take the opportunity to come because it was remote, and the councillors that were with us before during this, when it first came live, there was a huge outpour, I know that I went to quite a few meetings with some contractors, and they were very passionate people, and I just want to make sure that we have a one healthy discussion, one last time, to make sure all the verbiage is correct before we move forward with this. We do a lot of the nitty-gritty work with subcommittees, I feel like we just keep passing everything through because we are remote, and this has a huge effect on a lot of people, and I don't want to just see that they, we just move it forward because of the circumstances that we're in, we need to do this right, it's been a very long process, and I appreciate all the work that Counsel Roby has done, but it's just very concerning that we just keep pushing things through because of COVID, and I think that we need to really sit down and look at this one last time collectively, where we can brainstorm any ideas or any questions, so that we can all sleep at night, and knowing that we're not affecting the small business owners that may not be in the correct zone, and what they need to do in order to keep their business alive and thriving, especially during these circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dumas, any other comments or questions from the councillors?
Counsel Ossing, it's Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, I do have to agree with Counsel Dumas on this one, and when the first, when this first came through in the last term, I got quite a few people talking to me about this, and I think we just want to make sure we cover the complete space, that we're not going to unintentionally leave some people in a lurch, and I think having the type of conversation one last time in a, you know, in an Urban Affairs meeting would be the best place to address this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset, are there any other councillors wishing to weigh in? I will remind councillors that if this order is not approved as is, which is what the two law firms, for the two parties that we're in court with, if it is changed, those law, the terms of agreement could null and void, and the lawsuits are back in business, I just want to make sure the councillors are aware of that.
Mr. President, Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers.
In many respects, I agree with the two previous councillors, but I do think we have to move forward on this, you know, if it's back in urban, okay, we can discuss it in the public, which is a good idea, but remember, they will not have an opportunity to speak, they will not have an opportunity to participate, so that being the case, I guess, you know, I know what you two guys are saying, but I think we ought to move forward, I think we ought to vote on this tonight.
Thank you, Counsel Landers, I thought I heard another councillor?
It was me, Mr. President, Counsel Roby, I didn't see anybody else who looked like they wanted to speak, so I guess I thank you for the comments that you made, I would reiterate, if anybody has questions, they can certainly ask them tonight, you've all had the language, you've had the opportunity, but as you said, we can't make any changes, so I don't know what there really is to discuss, we know what it says, we approve it or we don't approve it, we don't really have a whole lot of choice, unfortunately, in this, so why have a committee meeting to discuss potential changes that we can't, if we approve, then nullifies the whole purpose of this order.
Mr. President, Counsel Dumas would like to speak.
Counsel Dumas.
So, we can make changes, however, the lawsuit will just be back on the table, so now we're putting a position where these two businesses, because they brought a lawsuit, now affect every other storage yard and contractor for the city of Marlboro, so if I have a storage yard that's not in the correct zone, I'm in jeopardy because of these two businesses, the city of Marlboro and a council that's no longer here decided to create this ordinance and cause this lawsuit, now we as councillors have to pick up the pieces, and now we have to now make other businesses in jeopardy because of a lawsuit, so when I hear that you cannot make changes, that's not true, there's just consequences for the action, is that correct?
No, you are correct, and the other piece is, you've got two years to comply, and I think that's a benefit that folks in two years, knowing something's going to change, should be able to make those changes.
Mr. President, this is Counsel Roby, can I comment on the statement that was just made?
Absolutely.
For councillors who was, were on the council last year, or the year of the last two years, are aware that we had a very similar ordinance in front of it, we currently do not allow contractor yards in the city, and so the fact that we don't is why these two people were, maybe it's not correct to use the word singled out, but they were fined, and then took their case to court because of circumstances, so the original order had the same exact zoning that we are currently using, so people that might have been impacted before are also still going to be impacted now. The idea is that we need to have something in the code, and where to put these contractor storage yards, and it seems to me to be appropriately placed in limited industrial and industrial, which is where they're going, so it may impact people, it may not impact people, that's why this also has the need to rezone the piece of property, if we just did the zoning alone, it doesn't work for one of the people involved in, rezone their property so that then they can have the storage yard that they want to have, other will put also rezone.
Thank you, Counsel Roby, are there any other comments or questions?
Counsel, President Ossing, it's Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, I understand the situation we're in as far as having this type of legal agreement, if it's going to be changes to the legal agreement, that if anything's being made as part of an Urban Affairs meeting, I don't see anything having detrimental impact to those people who are currently involved in the lawsuit, the question is, can we come up with something to be more inclusive so that we don't, we address the need of people that are not being addressed by this, and yes, there can be some issues of rezoning, but maybe there should be some other areas as well that we might need to address, so, you know, it's, I'm leaving it to the council on how that votes out, but I'm still, I still feel it needs to go through Urban Affairs.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset, are there any other comments?
This is Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just want to echo Counsel Dumas and Counsel Dusset's remarks, I do think it's important that we have committee meetings, and I know we haven't been having a lot of them lately due to the coronavirus, so I would stress that it's really important to still have that opportunity for us to spend more time on this, since I know we're in a situation where a lot of the agenda items were said to ask our questions in advance and have things worked out, so that the meetings can run more smoothly, which I think is wonderful, and it also would be a good opportunity to have just more dialogue around this, especially for the public, since it was such a contentious issue before, I know I wasn't on the council when it came up before, and I'm not on Urban Affairs, but if there was a meeting, I would happily attend and just get some more information, even though I've been able to read through the information here as well, so just want to put that out there. So just want to put that out there that I do think that the committee meetings are important and provide an opportunity to spend more time on certain agenda items than we would in a typical council meeting.
Thank you, Counsel Pearlman. Any other comments or questions from the counselors? Hearing none. On the motion to remove the contracted yard ordinance from Urban Affairs, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Dumas.
Counsel Dumas votes no.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes no.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Orem.
Counsel Orem votes no.
Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes no.
Counsel Osing.
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Tenera?
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes no.
Counsel Dusset?
Counsel Dusset votes no.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Five in favor, six opposed, sir.
The motion to remove from Urban Affairs does not carry. Counsel Roby.
I already have an Urban Affairs meeting set up to discuss BD Natural. I do not think that there would be enough time. I think that will have a lot of discussion. So I will set up another meeting to take up this agenda item. Hopefully, there will not be a lot of discussion and it can then get voted on in July.
Okay, agenda item 18.
Petition from Eversource Energy to install approximately 185 feet of 2-inch IP plastic pipe as a gas main extension on Union Street from 215 Union Street towards Hollis Street.
Mr. President, Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to set a date for a public hearing. Also refer to Tom DePercio, city engineer, for any conditions he would like to include.
Thank you, Counsel Landers. We'll set a public hearing for June 22 and ask the city engineer to provide comments, as he did in the past, on the request for Eversource to install 185 feet of 2-inch gas line on Union Street. So on the motion to refer to, actually, I'm sorry, to set a public hearing for June 22 and have the city engineer provide comments. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Tenera?
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Osing?
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Orem?
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
Motion to set a public hearing for June 22 and ask the engineer to comment on the Eversource request is approved, 11 in favor, none opposed. Agenda item 19.
Communication from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Banks regarding public comment on a license application filed by Marlborough Services Inc., DBA Brazil Remessa, at 576 Boston Post Road East to operate as a check casher.
Mr. President.
Counselor Tenera.
We would like to accept and place on file, please.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file, agenda item 19. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President, Counsel Dumas would like to speak.
Counsel Dumas.
Thank you. I apologize, guys, I need to recu, I know it's just an acceptance and place on file, but I'll recuse myself from this. My parents own a check cashing company and a little bit of a conflict of interest.
We will let the record reflect that Counsel Dumas is recusing from participating in agenda item 19.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Any other discussion?
Mr. President, this is Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you. As was stated in a letter that we received, I think from the mayor's office, this was discussed at Site Plan. Nobody at Site Plan had any objections, which would include the chief of police. If any of the counselors do have objections, though, they are certainly able to communicate that either on their own or as a comment in the letter that's going to be sent from the city for the site managers. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. On the motion to accept and place on file the communication with Counsel Dumas recusing, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Tenera?
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Osing?
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Navin? I'm sorry, Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Thank you. Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Dumas is recusing himself. Counsel Orem?
Counsel Orem votes yes.
10 yeas, 1 abstention, sir.
The motion to accept and place on file, agenda item 19, is approved, 10 in favor with 1 recused. Agenda item 20.
Minutes, boards, commissions, and committees.
President Osing, it's Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Like to accept and place on file the minutes of boards, commissions, and committees.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file all of the minutes. Is there any discussion on the motion?
This is Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a moment, having read through the school committee meeting minutes, to congratulate all of the seniors who graduated this past weekend. The superintendent, the school committee, the mayor, everyone organized a really successful series of mini graduation ceremonies over two days, Saturday and Sunday, practicing social distancing and giving students at Marlborough High School the opportunity to graduate in person. So I just wanted to commend the efforts of everyone involved and say how grateful we are that that experience happened in Marlborough and really was setting an example for many other communities in the Commonwealth. And I've seen a lot of the photographs and videos. It looked like it was such a success and really want to commend everyone who was involved.
Thank you, Counsel Pearlman. Any other comments or questions on the minutes?
Mr. President, Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers.
Could I just add to that? I went to a couple of graduations Saturday. I think it was the 49th graduation I made. It was so well done. I got to give Mr. Riley, the principal of the high school, and his staff. I never saw anything that went off so well. And it's amazing, you could just see it in the graduates and the parents. You know, 22 students receiving their diplomas at one time. I never saw anything that went as well. So congratulations to the staff and of course to the graduates. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Landers. Any other comments? Hearing none. Ask the clerk to call the roll to accept and place on file the minutes.
Counsel Irish.
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Tenera?
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Orem?
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Osing?
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
Motion to accept and place on file the minutes is approved, 11 in favor and none opposed. Agenda item 21, claims.
President Osing, it's Counsel Dusset.
Counsel Dusset.
Like to refer the claims to legal?
Motion made and seconded to refer the claims to the legal department. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Pearlman.
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Orem?
Counsel Orem votes yes on the claim.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Tenera?
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Osing?
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to send the claims to the legal department is approved, 11 in favor and none opposed. Reports of committees.
Mr. President, this is Counsel Roby.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you. So as I stated before, there is a Urban Affairs meeting scheduled for June 24. We will take up BD Natural. We will test our first, our first meeting trying to do this following the governor's rules. And then as soon as the planning board has their public hearing on the photovoltaic, that will, will set up a meeting. I can poll the counselors for when they are available and we will poll for when they are available to meet on the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. Any other counselors?
Mr. President, Counsel Dumas, when is that Urban Affairs meeting scheduled?
June 24, 7:30.
Thank you.
Agenda item 22.
Order number 20-100-8011, the application for renewal of a junk dealer, secondhand dealer license from Best Buy Stores LP number 820, DBA Best Buy, at 769 Donald J. Lynch Boulevard. This item was tabled until the June 8 city council meeting. We also have a communication from Police Chief David Georgie indicating no objection to the renewal of the junk dealer, secondhand dealer license for Best Buy.
Mr. President, Counsel Landers.
Counsel Landers.
I'd like a motion to approve, as we did receive the query back on Kelly Costello. In, as the mayor, as the clerk mentioned, the chief had no objection. So a motion to approve the license for Best Buy.
Motion made and seconded to approve the junk dealer license for Best Buy. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Osing?
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Tenera?
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
Counsel Orem?
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
Motion to approve the junk dealer license for Best Buy is approved, 11 in favor, none opposed. Counselor Tenera?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counsel Osing?
Counsel Osing votes yes.
Counsel Roby?
Counsel Roby votes yes.
Counsel Orem?
Counsel Orem votes yes.
Counsel Pearlman?
Counsel Pearlman votes yes.
Counsel Landers?
Counsel Landers votes yes.
Counsel Navin?
Counsel Navin votes yes.
Counsel Irish?
Counsel Irish votes yes.
Counsel Tenera?
Counsel Tenera votes yes.
Counsel Dumas?
Counsel Dumas votes yes.
Counsel Dusset?
Counsel Dusset votes yes.
And Counsel Wagner?
Counsel Wagner votes yes.
Eleven yeas, sir.
The motion to adjourn carries, 11 in favor and none opposed. We are adjourned at 9:46. Thank you, counselors.